All right, thank you very much. It is six thirty four September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four. Welcome to the Sherwin Select Board Meeting. As usual, we'll open up an executive session, go meeting executive session, open up again at approximately, we're estimating here, uh, seven thirty for the open session. So for now, I'm gonna please ask the Assistant Town Administrator to please read the executive session agenda.
Good evening. Item number one is meeting with town council in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty one, eight, three, and Suffolk Construction versus D C A M four forty five, four forty nine Mass, four forty four, parentheses, two thousand and seven, to discuss thirty one Hunting Lane, forty one North Main Street, I G O L Labasi Etelle versus the Town of Sherwin Land Court, number twenty one, M I S C P S zero 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 one ninety three, parentheses, H P S, and thirty one Hunting Lane, L L C versus Sherwin Board of Appeals Housing Appeals Committee, number twenty twenty one dash oh five, and forty one North Main Street, L L C versus Sherwin Board of Appeals Housing Appeals Committee, number twenty twenty one dash oh six, and pursuant to General Law, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty one, A, and seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law of federal grant and aid requirements, specifically the Public Records Law, General Law, Chapter four, Section seven, twenty six, to discuss privileged communication from town council regarding litigation. Item number two is meeting with town council in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty one, eight, three, and Suffolk Construction versus D C A M four forty nine Mass, four forty four, parentheses, two thousand and seven, to discuss Phoenix Partners Greenwood Street Development, L L C versus Sherwin Zoning Board of Appeals, Massachusetts Housing Appeals Committee, number twenty twenty four dash oh three, and Phoenix Partners Farm Road Development, L L C versus Sherwin Zoning Board of Appeals, Massachusetts Housing Appeals Committee, number twenty twenty four dash oh six, and pursuant to General Law, Chapter thirty eight, twenty one, A, seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law of federal grant and aid requirements, specifically the Public Records Law, General Law, Chapter four, Section seven, parentheses, twenty six, discuss privileged communication from town council regarding litigation. Item number three is meeting with town council in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty one, eight, three, and Suffolk Construction versus D C A M four forty nine Mass, four forty four, parentheses, two thousand and seven, to discuss Phoenix Partners Farm Road, L L C Etelle versus the Town of Sherwin Etelle Land Court, number twenty four, M I S C zero 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 four thirty three, and pursuant to General Law, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty one, A, seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or capital or special law of federal grant and aid requirements, specifically the Public Records Law, General Law, Chapter four, Section seven, twenty six, to discuss privileged communication from town council regarding litigation. Item number four is discussion regarding collective bargaining strategy for negotiations with A F S B Council ninety three, Local three thirty five, the D P W bargaining unit pursuant to General Law, Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty one, A, and three.
Oh, sorry. That was pretty good.
I move that we accept the executive session agenda as read by the Assistant Town Administrator.
All right, um, any comments on the agenda? Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
I might as well. And as Chair, I move that the, that an executive session is warranted for the, um, for the agenda items as just read by the Assistant Town Administrator, and I move that we go into an executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
I might as well. All right, please turn off the recording, and we're in executive session. All right, it is seven thirty two on September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four. Um, we just exited the executive session, and now we're beginning the open session portion of our agenda. And that's it's Assistant Town Administrator to please, um, read the open session agenda.
Good evening. After I read the agenda, the Select Board can vote to amend or approve the agenda. There is no, uh, public comment tonight. Items can be taken out of order, and topics not anticipated. Forty, uh, was advanced, maybe added. Item number one is consideration of a few appointments. Public Safety Committee, Mark Roach, return to expire June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty seven. He is a reappointment. And the Personnel Board, Natalie Ware, return to expire June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty seven. She is a new appointment. Item number two is review of the two thousand and twenty five Select Board Meeting Calendar and Town Meeting Dates. Item three is Select Board Budget Priorities for F Y twenty six and Initiatives for F Y, for, for two thousand and twenty five Town Meeting. Item number four is the Consent Agenda, which is the payroll warrant and draft minutes of August fifteenth and August twenty seventh, twenty second. Town Administrative Report, Project Updates, Sherwin History Center and Museum, Woodhaven Leland Farms Water System Improvements, Laurel Field Irrigation Project, P F A S Treatment, Town Building Water Supplies, two thousand and twenty four O P E M Evaluation, Staffing Updates, Personnel Admin Plan Review, and Public Outreach for Sherb Stark, Sherb Stark. Thank you.
Excellent. Do I have any motion to the agenda?
Yeah, I moved that we approved the agenda as read by the Assistant Town Administrator.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, Steven?
Aye.
Um, Jeff?
Aye.
Uh, Marion?
Aye.
I might as well. Thank you. All right, first agenda item, consideration of appointments, just as, uh, just as read by Diane. Public Safety, Mark Roach, and, uh, Personnel Board, Natalie Ware. Do you have any, uh, questions or comments relative to these appointments?
No.
Paul's not here, so someone has to.
Natalie, Natalie finished her term, I think, on advisory as.
She did, yes.
She did, yeah.
So I would move, uh, under item one that we appoint Mark Roach, uh, to Public Safety, reappoint Mark Roach to Public Safety, and appoint Natalie Ware to Personnel Board.
All right, um, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, Steven?
Aye.
Jeff?
Right.
Marion?
Aye.
I might as well. And I'll say, I'm pleased to hear that when someone steps off one board, they're willing to continue to volunteer, because advisory is one of the few that has term limits, so it's nice to see it to continue, um, public interest.
Do we know Diane Personnel Board now? So that's Natalie, and then is it Vicky, Relus, and Mary Moore? Are they the other two?
There's four. There's, uh, Lee and Win, Mary Moore, Vicky, and now Natalie will make four. We're gonna hopefully find a fifth to make it, so that not always good to have a four-member board.
Okay.
Um, okay, uh, next up, review of the two thousand and twenty five Select Board Meeting Calendar and Town Meeting Dates. And I think there was, uh, one conflict in there with, uh, Juneteenth, wasn't it?
Yes, I fixed that down at the end. You can see that I, I, we put it in, and I sent it to everybody. I forgot to put it on the calendar. It looks like school vacation week this year is a little later than it has been in the past. Which we believe that, um, Town Meeting has to be like, is always the Tuesday after, so it'd be a little later this year for Town Meeting, would be the twenty ninth, and the second night would be May first.
Now, I should know this by now. Town Meeting, day one's usually Tuesday, day two's usually Thursday. Is that usually how it's, it's fallen out? Okay.
And since I've been doing this for six years on advisory and select where we've only had one year where we went to a second night that, that I've been.
Right.
Yeah.
But we have to plan for it.
Yeah.
So should we make an adjustment with this thing that, obviously, six nineteen? So wait, is that the Juneteenth holiday? So is our select overlap? So we can't do that, right? So it's a holiday, and we can't have a, a, uh, open meeting on the holiday. Do we adjust that now? Or does it wait until we get closer to it?
That's for the board.
It seems kind of far off. Seems far off, and it might not be the same board, to be honest with you, so I'm, I'm fine with just kind of putting it in, you know, approving it as is, and then we'll adjust it when we get there. Jackie?
I was just wondering if it would be appropriate, um, based on the agenda, for you guys to vote, uh, for the April twenty ninth and May first date, so I could, um, have a definitive date to contact the, um, Superintendent's Office and try to get that on the books, so they don't have a musical scheduled for that night?
So voting, voting for a schedule will satisfy that? We vote for the schedule as it's shown, which, which calls out those two dates? That'll satisfy, um, that vote you're looking for?
Yes, I don't, I, I don't have a copy of the public packet. I didn't print it out, so as, if, if those dates are included, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Yep, there's those two dates. This is hold for A P M, and so I thi- I think it seems like it'll satisfy to me. I suggest we, um, vote for this as is. The Juneteenth one is so far off, we know we're not gonna meet, but frankly, it might be like different people on this board and different whatever, that it's, um, it's fine, I mean, just to hold it, even though we know it's not gonna happen.
That makes sense.
Okay, do you need a vote for this, Diane? Is this informational only?
Um, in the past, the Select Board has voted the calendar.
The meeting day. Also satisfy Jackie's request for the town meeting dates.
Give me one second on something real quick.
Right, Jackie, have you verified those dates already with the school, or are we gonna revisit after you do that?
No, I, no, I haven't, because I need the, I need the board to approve it first.
Yeah, okay.
Wait, how do we get off? We're not on every other week anymore. As it's, it's off of a week. Is this because we adjusted the weeks for, for December?
No, we're on, we're still on two weeks.
No, it's not. It's off of a week. It is absolutely off one week. It's a different every other week. If you go right now, every other week, because I know we screwed it up in November, December, which I still may revisit. Um, but this is a different off week than the week that we're working. Yes, it is.
All right, well, let me, let me go back and look at it and bring it back.
Yeah, let me talk to you, look at it. It's off.
Yeah, because it may be because of the schedule, the way we changed it, that this is what's happened, but we'll, we'll bring it back. Okay.
So it should be the seventh, and then the twenty third, and then whatever, and then what, yeah, whatever these other ones are. Which makes more sense, the day after the New Year's Day, I thought of it.
Could you guys at least vote for the town meeting dates? Would that be possible? Please?
Sure, um, I'll make a motion that the Select Board meet, since the agenda item is about the Select Board Meetings. And Select Board meet consistent for, with, um, Town Meeting on April twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty five, and as a backup, May first, two thousand and twenty five.
A second.
All right, all in favor, Steven?
Aye.
Jeff?
Right.
Marion?
Aye.
And I might as well. And Diane, I want to revisit some of the motions. A long time ago, we moved to adjusting things in November, December, and I'm not sure that works. It's already screwed these up, yeah, and I didn't like.
I'll go back and look at it tomorrow, too. Okay.
We might have to adjust that again. Okay.
Okay, no problem.
All right, uh, next up, uh, Select Board Budget Priorities for F Y twenty six and Initiatives. So who's, uh, there we go.
Yeah, Eric, I just wanted to introduce this to the board. Um, there's also a, a calendar here. This is a, the budget calendar, which does tie to your Select Board Meeting Calendar. Um, so the initial dates in here that have Select Board action are, are per your, you know, calendar, your twenty four dates, which should be accurate. Um, the later dates in two thousand and twenty five will update based on, you know, updating your actual meeting calendar, but, um, wanted to, the, the reason I up, pulled this up and included it in the packet was that, uh, advisory starts to meet next week, and they'll be putting together, you know, their schedule of activities. So this budget calendar, I try to capture everything together, advisory, Select Board, the interactions between the two, uh, capital budget, that sort of thing. Um, the, the dates on here that are highlighted are to be determined, and then they're driven by what, um, either the school committees or advisory, uh, or others, um, dictate, and we'll get those and, and populate. Um, the things here that are underlined are actions that will be coming before the Select Board, um, just like the budget process last year. So on October third, your next meeting, um, we are proposing in October third and November seventh to have a, a more in-depth talk about, um, you know, where the budget potentially stands for F Y twenty six, and what your goals and initiatives may be. Um, ahead of that, I wanted to just provide what we had talked about last year. That's what's, uh, after this schedule in your packet. So some of the things that we had talked about possibly, you know, possibly being budget, budget drivers, or, or initiatives, or, or things that you would, you know, found that you would, you would thought were important for us to either track by way of the budget or initiatives of the town meeting. Um, I have a running list of things that I'm aware of that may be budget drivers for us, um, which I can get into more detail at your October third meeting. Um, some of those things are, have been mentioned before, like how, how we fund capital, um, whether it's exempt borrowing, if we try to include more debt in the, the operating budget, you know, that will require some analysis, but that had been mentioned in the past. Uh, we just received from, uh, our auditor did a special audit of the Cemetery Commission, which, uh, helps, um, reinforce some of the observations we've made, uh, over the last couple of years. So there may be some things in there that we may want to, um, sort of enact and provide some more resources to the Conservation Commission, uh, which may be from Public Works.
Cemetery, you mean Cemetery Commission?
Cemetery Commission. I'm sorry. What, what did I say?
Uh, I forget, but it wasn't Cemetery Commission. It was the Conservatory Commission, I believe.
Okay, Cemetery Commission, sorry. Um, I've heard some folks talk about wanting to have some more support for the Village Center and landscaping and keeping the town beautiful. Uh, but anyway, I've, there's a, I have a running list and get into more detail, uh, at, on October third, but just wanted to, to get it in front of you now to get your, your thoughts and, and well, and, and ask for any of you to, to reach out ahead of, ahead of time, ahead of October third, uh, with any ideas you may have or concerns you may have. Um, Marion and I had a meeting this morning about G I S. Um, there may be some things there that, that might be, um, you know, good to include in the budget to help our G I S program. Uh, but, um, anyway, wanted to get the conversation started, and also wanted to get the budget calendar before the Select Board.
I see the first item, Capital Budget Guidance, uh, it was September thirteenth. Did that actually go out?
That went out by the Capital Budget Committee, and my, my follow-up guidance will be coming out in days. So the Capital Budget Committee did, did meet and issued a letter, um, which did, did reference that there'll be more detailed guidance being provided by the Town Administrator, as, as was last year.
Okay.
I see, uh, Dan has his hand raised. Go ahead, Dan.
Thanks, Eric. Just a quick, uh, quick, uh, flag and comment. Um, advisory hasn't actually set meeting dates, so the dates, you know, listed here are, are still up in the air. And Jeremy, I think October fourth and eleventh are Fridays, so on those, I think, probably aren't actually like the dates for advisory meetings, but that aside, uh, when we meet on, uh, uh, next, next Wednesday, we'll start, uh, getting started out with schedule, so that, that'll, that'll be coming together soon, but not, not there yet.
Yeah. Yeah, tho- those hi- dates highlighted in yellow are, are your dates to be determined. They're carryovers from last year. They have not.
Oh, yeah, okay, that makes perfect sense. Okay, it sounds good. Thanks.
How many confirmed members of advisory are there currently?
There are seven currently. Uh, and I spoke with, uh, Mike Chiamo today, and he's working on, uh, the remaining two.
Good.
Any other questions or comments about this? There's no action.
We're talking about priorities for two thousand and twenty six yet, are we, or not?
I think both. Like, that's part of this agenda.
The only thing I was gonna say is our biggest priority, I think, is gonna be created in North Sherwin Water District Administration and Process, you know, now that that's been approved.
Yeah, so, some of that.
Staffing it and getting it, uh, or whatever legally and, uh, organizationally, um, and perhaps funding-wise, uh, up to, up to, you know, moving forward with Toll Brothers and whomever else.
Yeah, I mean, we could make a pretty good list just with what's going on now.
Yeah. I, I think that'll be, you know, I, I might be getting ahead of ourselves here, but I just saw the title of pri- priorities for two thousand and twenty six, and that's certainly among them.
Yeah.
Well, actually, I'm a little confused on the agenda, and we definitely have, it's titled Select Board, but those budget priorities, okay. So it's like what budget priorities, not so much global priorities type of thing, so.
Budget priorities and/or initiatives that you may want to bring forward or sponsor for town meeting?
Okay, that's a good question.
Is that, is that part of this agenda item as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
For, for town meeting, two thousand and twenty five.
Yep, yep.
Yes.
Right.
Um, okay, do people need any additional thoughts? I mean, Jeff had a good one there, talking about the Water District.
Um, I do feel like for town meeting, we may want to revisit the, um, Personnel Action Plan in terms of revising the, uh, remote work, um, sort of situation. Um, so I would at least want to put a placeholder into the warrant for that, as we kind of try to discuss and fi- figure out how, what we want to do with it. Obviously, I think that would also have to be at least partially driven by the Personnel Board as well. Um, but that would be, that'd be one thing for me to, to, as a priority, would be a more expanded remote work allowance situation.
Because Steve, the Personnel Board at their meeting this morning actually talked about what they're looking to do over the course of the year. Uh, one of those things being some review and update of the Personal Administration Plan, um, uh, including the remote work policy. I'm not sure where they'll come down on their recommendations, but the, the Personnel Board did, uh, express an interest to review and update the Personnel Act, uh, Administrative Plan.
That's, um, I see from before, you know, F Y twenty five operating considerations. I definitely keep the bullet economics, um, sustainability. Um, I have ideas where that goes, and you and I, Jeremy, have talked about it. I want to keep it as, as a generic bullet, and a million things could fall under it. Um, but I definitely want to keep that as a, as a consideration, and frankly, one of this board's and your positions, goals.
Hello?
Easy.
Well, I'm on a meeting.
I mean, following our meeting this morning, uh, you know, uh, straightening out the, uh, G I S systems is a major goal. It's gonna be a big piece of work. It's gonna be ongoing, but I think, you know, Jeremy sort of outlined the first steps that we have to take this morning, and it's gonna certainly extend in two thousand and twenty five. Sure, that's already on your list, Jeremy. And then, of course, the intermunicipal agreements. Hopefully, they'll be done by then, but.
Look at the personnel. So I was curious, when I looked under the personnel bullet you have here from, from last year, whatever, um, what do you think of this, of the specific sub-bullets you put under there under Personnel? What do you think would continue into F Y twenty six? I'll put a question back to you over there, I guess, or anyone to this board.
Wait, sorry, what are you referring to here, Eric?
Um, well, it's gonna be background material. We had our last year's, and last year's, um, operating budget consideration.
I see it now, Personnel.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're still struggling to fill the Conservation Agent position, so that, that's ongoing. Uh, we have had some interest recently with the Town of Millis to share a Conservation Agent. We did have a couple of interviews, actually, just recently with, with two potential candidates. Um, and, and have, we've yet to determine to take action on those, those two candidates. Uh, but that, yes, the Conservation Agent position is, is still, is still vacant, and we're struggling to fill that. This Sustainability Coordinator position is still, is still vacant. That, we do have a path for there. It's a contingent on Houston, um, coming to terms.
Uh, we made progress. I was pleased with the progress made with that.
Yeah, yeah, um.
Do we need to wait for Hollison Town Meeting or something for sustainability?
No, it's, the Select Board had some questions of Travis that, that they're working through, so that is eminent. It's, it's supported. There was just some detail that their Select Board wanted before taking final action. So that, that is likely gonna happen shortly. Um, let's see. I think the balance of those were, I mean, Cola, obviously, is a discussion to be had. The Treasure Collector integration has essentially happened, uh, though we are looking at, uh, the position of Assistant Treasure Collector that currently doesn't exist, but maybe a need.
Right.
Oh, I, I thought we had one, though. Don't we have, who's the, who's, um, what's the woman's name? She lives around the corner from me. I can't think of her. She work? Say again?
Yeah, her name's Tish.
Yeah, Tish.
Yeah.
Co- what's her?
She's, it's like an, she's an Assistant Treasurer. She's not an Assistant Treasure Collector.
Oh, I see. That's what you need. So it's not a new hire.
Semantics, but there's a, there's some differences there, uh, that we're, we're working through.
But it might be retaining her, but changing her title. Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, um, I'm gonna have to go on and go through all these, but do you have any general thoughts about last year's versus this year's? In general, the, and the, any of these from last year's, I mean, I think the most, not just personnel, but these general operating budget considerations. And I'm asking the board as a whole, and Jeremy, what would continue on to the, what, what would we continue on to F Y twenty six? I think that's a good starting point.
Um, one big budget driver that we have been very fortunate, uh, with our experience, the last two budget cycles, has been, is the in, Employee Health Insurance Benefit Expense. Our experience has been stellar, so our, our budget has been able, we've been able to contain that budget. If that experience comes back different, that, that could be a big budget driver for you.
Okay.
It's really, I think you mean utilization too, right? They're not, they have, the claims have been.
Yeah, that's what they call the, the utilization. They call it experience.
Yeah. Sometimes it's a bad thing, because if people aren't in COVID, they weren't utilizing it, but diseases like cancer were going undetected.
Um, I, I feel like perpetually, we need to be trying to strategize ways to fund the Capital Stabilization Fund to identify even, uh, small, but, um, you know, sort of sustainable stream of, of, of money to go into that. Because right now, is there zero in that fund, stabilization fund right now?
No, there's some funding. We actually contributed last year. It's, it was just a one-off, uh, source of funds.
Yeah, but my understanding, Jeremy, is that in other municipalities that have a capital stabilization fund, they have like an identified revenue stream that kind of feeds into it, and we don't. So, and I'm just, it's one of those things where I'm just kind of like, it's great to have that stabilization fund, but it's not really helping to pay for future capital if we're not finding ways to put any money into it, you know?
Yep.
Um.
Well, it's like some of those, like the cemetery, stable, cemetery fund that gets, or, or Farm Pond, they, they have funds, stabilization funds. I'm not sure they're called that, but they have a revenue source designated to those expenses.
So that, that should be a consideration, almost in perpetuity to some degree. Like, I want economic sustainability, that, that one, I think, will, yeah, be there as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Any thoughts on the community preservation? Look, oh, let's say it gets voted in. Would we have anything for creating committee or anything like that? Would that be? I don't know if that'd be an operating consideration, but just, I mean, because it's gonna be now a new fund, a new fund managed. Would that come into play in this, in these considerations at all?
Well, the, the committee would be established by town meeting. So if the, it's, I guess that's another placeholder that we would need to have on the warrant, is that if CPA passes the election in November, then at town meeting, we would have to have a warrant article that establishes the committee. You know, and the committee is basically all ex officio members of other, other town boards. Um, I guess we can, the town meeting could also vote to add Eric Johnson on it in perpetuity if they want, but, but I don't believe that, I, I don't believe that any of the members of that committee would be Select Board, Select Board appointees. Um, so we wouldn't really have any action on that, and, you know, again, the, the fund itself would be entirely separate from us, and it would just be the, the CPA Committee that would be in, in control of it, so. So again, it would be a major thing for the town, but. so again, it would be a major thing for the town, but not anything that was under the select board's purview.
How about anything um IT related? That's under us still, right?
Well, there there may be uh depending on how how Jeremy decides to go forward.
Yeah, with GIS might be something within the IT budget. Uh, I think there's some further consolidation of IT related things, uh, mobile phones. We might want to consolidate within the IT budget. Those are spread out among the various departments.
Are the um, the cell phone services for those individual phones, are they at least consolidated into a single sort of town plan? Or does do individual departments have their own sort of carrier plans?
The latter, unfortunately. So there's there's work to do to consolidate those.
Yeah. Is there a way to 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 consolidate them or is it?
Yep.
Not.
We have a combination of AT and T and Verizon mobile service.
Yeah. It seems seems like seems reasonable to try to consolidate as many of those things as possible that that seem more like kind of commodity, IT commodities, right?
Yeah. Does our passing the um that new um I can't remember the words, but negotiation for the electricity, sustainable electricity we did for the whole town. Does that affect any of this at all? At least for the town's electrical budget or anything, or probably wouldn't be any putting it on the goal. We already made the motion and we already did made the action on it, I guess.
So that that's sort of our default for municipal electricity. Um, the town accounts can also use that, but we don't have to. Uh, so as the the agreements that we negotiate and and were uh, under for natural gas and electricity for last year, the supply agreements, you know, as those come due, we can either negotiate new agreements that may or maybe less than the town's townwide plan. Uh, we will obviously wouldn't enter into anything that would be over the town plan because that's our default. But we could potentially negotiate a better price uh for for town buildings outside of the aggregation.
Uh, Sean, I'll weigh in on this, but I'm I'm wondering if there are anticipated expenses uh, for uh, for water treatment and our public water supplies. That.
There will need to be, yes.
Was that to me?
Uh, no.
I think it's rhetorical. I mean, it's just a question that we will need to get answers to, but.
I'm trying to listen to ZBA because they're talking about traffic on Brush Hill and you guys at the same time.
Yes.
There's definitely gonna be an increased cost. The facilities is definitely gonna have an increased cost with PFAS treatment. For sure. If that was the question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was my, I just wanted I you to hear it from you, Sean, but that was my suggestion that we should look at it.
Yeah, Jeremy's your expert, but I don't know that we'll see it this year. We'll see some capital, I think, but I don't know that we'll see the operating this year.
Maybe we're talking about FY twenty six planning now. Next year.
That's what, well, I think that's the fiscal year I'm talking about.
Okay.
Well, we'll see if we have it up and running. That'll be interesting.
But for for Leland and and um Woodhaven, there'll be an increase in cost for the new treatment added there.
Sorry, definitely. For sure.
And how's that split up between like, um, remind me, our costs and then we supplement some, right? Is that fully done on? Is that fully under them?
So we didn't, we left that a little bit open, Eric. Um, it's obviously metered between the two. Right now, there it it's not shared because it's it's still operating as two systems. Uh, we left that open at town meeting. We left it open in the agreement that we would, we would determine the operating cost. Um, because basically the town will will bear the operating cost and and I I guess bill it back. Again, right now it's separated because the, you know, white water bills, white uh, Leland for what they need to bill and then bills the town. So it'll be a percentage of usage, I I would assume.
I just know some of Leland, um, their condo fees, we'd call them their homeowners fees. I've been, I'm, you know, going up pretty substantially that something like this could be tough. In the past, I I flip around my conservative nature this, but I could see the unforeseen PFAS going kind of crazy with this. I'd be willing to have the town supplement a greater share than the past. Don't hold.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was saying, don't play this recording when it comes to force and advisory, but I'm just thinking of concepts. I think it's a tough one there.
The the biggest portion of that will obviously be the capital expense and we will will certainly be bringing that to this border town meeting on on how we're gonna purchase that equipment. We are making provisions for that in the in the facility, but it's obviously not permitted. It's a long way from being permitted and designed, so it'll be its own separate project, but we have um, the provisions for it.
All right, Sean, once we have a design that's going to be paid for by the MPO grant for town center transportation corridors, et cetera. Um, will would it be in FY twenty six that we'd want to start raising money for the improvements that they're definitely going to want? That we're definitely going to want once we see a better plan for town center traffic.
Oh, I Jeremy could weigh in on that, but I think you're talking twenty seven or twenty eight by the time the design's done.
Yeah. Yeah, and they hopefully, if if the town coalesces upon a design or a concept that it likes, hopefully, the construction costs would be funded by federal and state transportation dollars to the tip. The town still may be responsible for some some of the costs if there was any potential right away impact uh, to get easements or whatnot uh related to design. So there there could be some costs that the town may need to bear, but we're not really sure what those are yet. Will be dependent on the design, um, and if the town comes together on a concept. I mean, some things to be thinking about related to that, though, are, you know, wh- what on, you know, that that's the road surface. Is there anything under the road surface that you might want to be thinking of or planning for or thinking of making a decision on, um, you know, ahead of that roadway work? And is there any any budget impact related to that or town meeting actions related to that?
Eric, I think he means fire hydrants and water lines.
Water and sewer infrastructure.
Sewer lines, yeah.
That's exactly what I was reading between the lines, yeah.
Right.
Right.
I didn't want anyone to miss between the lines there.
Yeah, with with.
Or sewer. Yeah, that'll be interesting. Uh, that I know we have um great support for the design funds and approve for that. Is the construction funds on the five year MPO? I don't think so.
They're not currently, but they they've said through this pilot, we have a meeting with the MPO next week to to hear more about how they're actually going to give us the funds for for the pilot and, you know, what they're expecting us to do as far as selecting the designer consultant and all that that sort of thing, but um, the expectation is that, you know, these pilot projects would be uh programmed in the tip. So they they are thinking about it. It's not in the five year currently. But they would, they're they want to commit to funding the construction.
That's great. All right, so kind of to this with the goals, let's get the background. Just real quick, I'm gonna get it. I was looking at our our last year's goals. Um, we had here thoughts on FY twenty four goals. What are the ones that are circled? Those are the ones that look like we've accomplished those, right?
Yeah, we've accomplished a lot of those.
Yeah, okay.
Some more capital related.
Capital. What does that mean, Jeremy?
Some of those good, that was an attempt last year for me to take some of the older goals and put them together uh, in line with sort of the visions and values that we had talked about last year um, that line up with the town's uh master plan. Um, so trying to pull everything together into into something like like that, so. Included today just to to kind of remind you of of some of the things we talked about last year. Um, but really want your your kind of your new ideas looking forward and um, things that we, I don't know, maybe didn't accomplish that we want to or just something totally totally new that that's now before us that we need to consider.
And we're going to this in October, right? In more detail?
Yep.
This is our.
Yeah, so this this conversation has been helpful for me and you'll you'll we'll have a more in-depth conversation in October. And I'll have some more, um, you know, FY twenty six specific information prepared for you at that point.
So I here's what I suggest. Uh, if Jeremy or the things you heard us say tonight, type of the things you heard us say. Um, and then also provides us backgrounds. I am using the old stuff to stimulate my brain, but you know, just like Marion said, I I think it's time to think up some some new new things as well. And um, that's also, you know, community preservation and things like that, but right now I'm just not coming up with anything original. Okay, yeah, that's uh, that's what I so I suggest. Does anyone else have any comments on this?
I look forward to that discussion. It'll be good.
Yeah, me too. Alrighty, um. To move it on here, we have here the consent agenda. The motions or anything relative to the consent agenda?
Yeah, I'll do Paul's job. I'd move approval of the consent agenda payroll warrant and meeting minutes for eight fifteen twenty four and eight twenty two twenty four.
Second.
All right, um, all favor Stephen?
Hi.
Uh, Jeff?
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
I might as well. Very good. All right, it looks like Jeremy's got a good list of town administrator reports. Um, hold on one second, do whatever. Okay, I was gonna, I was looking if anything had to do with the water district. I was sticking it back, but it looks like it doesn't, so. Go ahead, Jeremy.
Sure, yeah, I'll look a little list here, but I'll I'll be quick. Uh, just some updates on some some of the larger projects, um, the Sherbin History Center Museum. We put out an RFQ. We received six responses back, which is, I think, is a great response. Uh, we've met as a as a working group, as a committee and reviewed um those those responses and come up with two candidates, two design teams that we'd like to interview. So those interviews are hopefully gonna be scheduled for next Thursday. Um, and then the outcome of those interviews, we'll we'll make a decision on who the architect will be. So some some great progress there and some great, um, the submissions were great. They they had some good ideas and they they all seemed to really understand the project and our intent and uh could meet our schedule and and had some great sample projects. The Woodhaven Leland Farms water system improvements, we talked about a little bit earlier. Um, that's the, you know, combining of the two water systems. Uh, lots of progress there by way of planning the actual construction work. So we've lined up all the vendors that we need um, for the the shed and the buildings. Um, Sean's working on some of the the exterior plumbing and piping. Uh, he could give us a little bit more of an update on where we're at with some of that, the construction there. Sean, you want to add anything?
Sure, I'm working with um, site contractor and a and a uh, construction company. There's actually an addition that has to happen to the shed. Um, and then there's well lines and and electric that has to go kind of from one side of Woodhaven all the way to the other, so. We're we're trying to phase that in. We're trying to weather ourselves into a new shed before winter. So depending, we don't know the exact lead times of the equipment. Um, but depending on when it comes in, they can start building out the equipment. Um, you know, regardless of regardless of the weather, because of this considerable amount of time replumbing everything and staging it ready for the switch over. Once they do the switch over, there's obviously a period of time, the whole, the entire complex will have to be on tank water. Uh, similar to what Town Hall had a few years ago, if anyone remembers that during the cease and desist with the well, so you obviously don't want to do that in January, uh, but we can, we can do a fair amount of work and and stage it until we're ready. So that that that's the goal. The goal is to try and do the site work and and be done with it. Or have most of it done so that the the pavement's good and ready for winter.
And can we use the ARPA fund as rapidly as we can?
Uh, i- is there any provision in it to do PFAS abatement on this system also or to stub out at least to add filtration capabilities later?
The space in the shed dedicated for that, there will be obviously taps, you know, in the plumbing ready for it.
Yeah.
Uh, but shy of a pilot study and a fair amount of engineering, it's not determined exactly what that system is. It's 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 much more complex than people lead other people to believe it. You know, you have to engineer it. You have to send your water out and do a pilot study, so shy of that, we don't have a permit to build the PFAS, but we're we're leaving space for it. Uh, so then it'll it'll be a seamless switch over once it, once it gets installed.
There'll be space for it within the 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 building addition.
But what I'm wondering is where we are. We've had some turn back if there will be any of the uh ARPA funding that we have to commit by the end of this year, or if that could be a potential funding source for it.
Yeah, I can make that ARPA funding go away pretty quick.
Yeah, and some of the recently, the 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 rules on how you obligate this this ARPA funding has changed, so literally, we can have to obligate the funds, we can have just a letter between departments or a letter from the select board to public works.
That's better.
ARP is obligated for tree work and we're good, so.
Yeah, okay.
We can make that decision relatively late, um, before the end of the fiscal or end of the calendar year and put that letter for the file.
Could be a consideration for that is all I'm saying.
Yep.
Depending on what we decide at Leland Farm, we decide at Laurel Field Irrigation.
So update there, Laurel, the the irrigation consultant is developing plans and specifications uh based on um, you know, the yields that were they were shown or that were they found? And we should have those by the end of September for review uh, with the hopes that we'll we'd be ready to go out to bid for that work um sometime shortly after that.
And it's enough water to do one.
One field now, aren't they only irrigating?
It's about one, one soccer field, one regulation size soccer field, a little bit more than that and then but that also, that could be like six child's soccer fields. Um, but it also, even if that's for, you know, regular irrigation, but having that water supply available will allow them to maintain the rest of the field better as well to establish grass and whatnot, but um, no, they're not going to be able to irrigate, you know, much more than than one full sized soccer field continuously.
I'm not sure it's worth the money, to be honest with you, but it's a fair, a couple hundred thousand dollars to complete it, isn't it?
Yep.
It allows them to rebuild a field, though, like it, you know, if we had rebuilt a field this year.
Yeah.
With no irrigation at all, uh, you can look at the front of Town Hall right now. We would have spent a massive amount of money uh, and and had a really good July and half of August. And late August and September would have completely destroyed everything you just did. And we'd be trying to reseed next spring, so the even a small amount of irrigation when you really need it uh, could could really help and it and it opens the door to being able to actually rebuild a field, which we've never done. Uh, and 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 get things established in in a way that you want to do even with minimal amount of water.
Yeah, they just don't have, the soil's so bad there because it was stripped, so not much to work with.
Some of it's really good. Some of it won't stop. The side towards Rockwood won't even slow down. We're we're cutting it constantly.
Yeah.
All right, um, did we kind of touch on this with the uh Land Farmers or other sites PFAS?
PFAS, well, oh, so the the town meeting appropriation from the spring uh for the design study funds. Uh, we've put out a proposal to some engineering consultants, which is due a a week from this Friday and to get an engineer on board to do the study and piloting necessary for those town buildings.
Is it just bench studies? We ascend water out or do you actually do a pilot study like you you put in like little mini systems, run the town's water through it, do the testing and stuff like that?
We'll see what the engineers propose, um. They they know what our needs are. They know what our available funds are. You know, we'll try to get as far as we can with the the funding that we have. We need to focus necessarily on the town campus uh well, because it's currently out of compliance, but we'd like to do, you know, as much as we can. Um, and as efficiently as we can, so we'll see how far we can get with the money we have available. But, you know, the the engineers will propose, Eric, what what bench studies or or piloting will be needed to meet DEP standards.
I know the SRF funds are throwing money at all PFAS. Look at the drinking water side and those are the ones that are scoring the highest. I mean, low interest loan, maybe up to ten percent rate relief, depending upon what comes from feds. Maybe it's worth it, maybe it's not, but you know, with the application, just a thought.
Yep. I guess the the I'd like to just uh move to the last one. I just wanted to to let the the select board know that the Sherbstock folks organizing the event have uh, I I requested that we have some space available um for to have a municipal table, you know, something ten by ten under a canopy so that we could give out, um, you know, pamphlets on things or informational flyers that we may have. Uh, have some town staff or department heads be there to Uh, have some town staff or department heads be there to help answer questions or just meet and greet folks. Um, to to hear, you know, folks might have some concerns or or whatnot, but ju- just as a nice public outreach. Um, so I'd I'd like to invite, you know, any other select board to to kind of. To hang out near that table um during Sherbstock. Um. Uh, you know, as you're wandering around. It might be a good venue as well to solicit some more volunteers, you know, Diane will have sort of our listing of of vacant volunteer positions and. And so forth, but um. I think it'd be a good opportunity to get, you know, out in front of, you know, the thousand plus folks that may be attending the event, so. We'll we'll have a. Town of Sherburne municipal table and welcome any ideas as far as what content we should. Should have there and. Um, anything we might want to feature.
Time is pretty short. Uh. It's October fifth, right? That's really soon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe maybe just what you said, though, maybe if Diane. Publish prints on a one page, the open positions in town, just if you had a list, if someone comes up, you could just say, well, if you're interested, here's. Here's the open positions. That could be a one pager that you could.
I I can get that ready. I will be here. I'll be in Canada, but I can get it ready for the table.
Yeah, but put it on maybe cardboard stock or something that we could hand it out if people came up and seemed interested. I don't know how many need, but.
I think it's required that a select board member be there at all times.
Well, I got.
I.
Wait, is that in the town bylaw?
I actually. I have to register and get a bracelet from Heidi, so I haven't even done that yet.
Well, it didn't cost you anything.
No, I know, but I.
What whatever happened to the sports car and the and and the parade? Thing, somebody was talking.
Parade's still going on. The the parade's going on at eleven AM.
Oh, yeah, somebody was talking about putting the select board in some sort of a convertible.
Oh, we can find a convertible for you to be.
I mean, I didn't want.
If not, Zach has a couple of beautiful red fire trucks or.
I want.
You can have a green.
ATV.
Green B B W truck.
You do you guys? There is no, seriously, do you? Would you like to be on a vehicle during the parade? We could, we could.
Saying no, she's saying yes.
I may have to march for the Boy Scouts. There were.
I'm grabbing Paul from his house in the loader.
I'll drive my tractor through it.
Hey, what's what? Are you guys doing something, Sean, for the um firewater thing this Saturday night, right? Isn't it five thirty? Who's doing that?
Oh, hi. As far as I know, Heidi's been heading that up. We. We helped build some uh. Floating. Fire pits.
Yeah.
Uh. To make sure their fire pits didn't sink, but. Uh. I mean, we're we're not really involved in it.
All right, I didn't know.
I will be there. I will definitely be there with my kids.
Yeah, yeah, I will too.
I can't be there, but apparently our state senator Ralph is going to be there.
Really?
She she's going to be at at uh Sherbstock. Uh, Mary, she changed.
Oh, 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 good. Okay, that's great.
She has little kids, too.
Yeah.
Little like.
We've provided her and her family a number of bracelets to get into Sherbstock, so.
Oh, good move, good move.
No, that that's what I have.
I will swim the perimeter on Saturday night, then, I guess. You guys will be shooting at me.
Do you have any staffing updates? Do you think things are good?
No staffing updates. I I was hoping to have some staffing updates, but nothing has changed since the last meeting. No news on the competition administrator. I was thinking we might have news, but we don't.
Yep, I understand that. I I've been talking to both chairs. I understand that definitely. All right. From Paul, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Well, wait a second. Um, did we approve the minutes of August twenty two?
Yes.
So there's a issue because. It says seven PM Sherburne Select Board, August twenty two. And then it says Stephen Si called the meeting to order at six thirty PM. And that's a prima facie open meeting law violation. To convene the meeting. A half an hour before. The uh.
Open session versus executive session, you think?
Yeah, so there needs to be a correction here because I I don't want Stephen Si cited for an open meeting law violation.
Especially not if it has open pressure on.
Diane can fix that.
All right. Uh, do we need to to vote anything differently for our approval? Should we simply say? Um, revote to that approval to say as amended, uh. By the. Assistant town.
Is. The start to time. Rather than s- seven and six thirty.
So it's one apparently I was not at, probably because I, so is it um? What do you call it? I don't know what happened. Do you want to correct what happened right now or just simply I'll allow staff to edit it?
It it says you were right there, Eric.
Stephen Si opened the meeting?
Yeah, that's what's so puzzling about this. It says members.
Delayed?
Eric Johnson. Stephen Si. And then Stephen Si called the meeting to order. A half an hour before the meeting starts.
Okay, I moved to withdraw the approval for the April, August second, twenty twenty four minutes and we'll figure it out what happened. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, um, Stephen?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Marian?
I.
Paul, is it appropriate for you to vote? Because you didn't vote for him or or I'll leave it up to you if you want to vote on this or not?
Happy to to vote to to. On the approval. So that I can make some.
All right, I might as well. All right, to catch. Okay, any motions relative to this meeting?
Yeah, go turn the Patriots on. It's my motion.
Move to. Move.
Steven, you kind of broke up. All right, do I have a second?
A second that. It's good thing.
All favor, Steve.
Well, we're still sitting here.
I know. Uh, Jeff?
Hi.
Marian?
I.
I am as well. All right, Patriots and uh Z B A.
Ciao, guys.
Good night, everybody.